The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Waverne City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, September 25th, 2023. First item on agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held September 11th, 2023. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept those as presented, your worship.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor. Carrie Dean, answer. Additions to the agenda?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. There's time for administration.
Council? Seeing none, just want to make note there, Council Van Betje is away at this point in time, is absent tonight. So that is, there are six, we have still quorum. There's no public hearings and notices. Tonight, there's a, under delegations, proclamations, and petitions, we have a proclamation. And the proclamation reads for Waverne Communiton. It reads as such, "The Waverne Communiton has helped local community agencies in Waverne and the surrounding area for over forty years by raising funds and awareness leading up to and during an annual televised event during which performers from the area showcase their talents. This event has become a tradition in Waverne and is driven by passionate volunteers from our community, support from local businesses, and assistance from the representatives of the community agencies being supported. The Communiton is proud to be hosting Fall 11th Communiton again this year. Whereas this year's Communiton will help support Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Waverne, County Mental Health Association, Community Low-Income Center, CNIB Foundation, Envision Counseling and Support Center, Inclusion Waverne, Southeast Advocates for Employment, Spinal Cord Injury Saskatchewan, Waverne Caravan, and the Waverne Youth Center. Whereas the majority of funds that are raised by the Communiton will stay in our community by supporting our community agencies, which then invest their funds into their programs and services. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor, City of Waverne, do hereby proclaim October 2023 on the occasion of the forty-second Communiton as Communiton Month." Tonight, we have Linda Rideout with the Communiton Chair. If you would, Linda, come forward and speak a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Roy. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Roy, for proclaiming October 2023 to be Communiton Month here in Waverne. The Communiton Committee truly appreciates the support we receive through the city and our community as a whole. Communiton has been a staple in our community for over forty years, and we look forward to another successful event this year. We encourage our community to share in our excitement. Our ambassador squad will be attending events at schools throughout the community during the month of Sept- October, sorry. So if you see them in the community, please say hi. Also during the month of October, we will be hosting a couple different fundraising campaigns with businesses throughout the community, so please keep watch when you are out and about. There are so many ways to be part of this special event, whether you like to entertain or perform, volunteer, donate, or become a community member, we'd love to have you join us. So please mark your calendars. Communiton will be held on Friday, October 27th, from 8:00 AM until 11:00 PM. Our broadcast sponsor, Access Communications, televises Communiton for us every year. So if you can't join us in person, please join us by watching on the Access Now Community channel or online through their website at myaccess.ca."
Thank you. And if you'd just come over here for a picture, please? Reports of standing committees, there are none. Consent agenda, we have the cash activity report for August, the fire department report for August, the public works report for August, and the water treatment plant report for August. With that, can I have a motion to receive and file?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor. Carrie, those can be found on our website. Motions. The first motion is the managed IT service tender. Who do you have to speak for?
Thank you. So the City of Waverne's managed IT service account has been held by WBM Technologies Inc. since November of 2014. The 2023 average monthly cost is eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-four and eighty-seven cents. Prior to that, the IT services were provided in-house by a City Waverne employee. In 2023, City Council identified the review of the managed IT services as a strategic priority. So on July 25th, 2023, the City of Waverne Managed IT Service Tender was posted on bids and tenders. Proposals were to be submitted through this website by August 24th, 2023 at 2:00 PM. A total of twenty-six proposals were received from the following companies. And I won't read them all out, you can see them all there. The successful proponent will be responsible for planning, establishing, implementing, and maintaining all work related to the City of Waverne's IT system, including but not limited to the following: managed services, managed and maintained network devices such as server switches, routers, firewalls, UPS, and other physical network devices; coordinate technical support and maintenance of integrated systems, including but not limited to Microsoft Outlook, financial software and iCity, the printer software, asset management software, the recreation software, the cemetery software, landfill software, data systems, CGS, VPN management, and various software licenses. They're also to act as a liaison for all hardware, software, and server applications. Another requirement is to ensure regular and scheduled backups are performed and tested on a regular basis. In the event of a disaster involving the data or system, the proponent must be able to recover the data or system in predetermined timeframe. Install and manage antivirus, anti-malware, and anti-spam software, firewalls, ensure security is maintained, maintain a complete listing of all IT assets, including location, purchase date and warranty, establish an annual hardware renewal program, make recommendations for infrastructure updates for consideration during annual operating and capital budget decisions. They're also required to provide a service desk and onsite support. It is understood that a variety of network administration and management tasks will be performed, both onsite and remotely, for the municipal office and its facilities. The proponent shall operate a help desk during regular business hours to act as a first point of support. And response time is to be agreed upon by both parties. The proponent shall also provide on-call service for essential services at the water treatment plant and the fire hall. The proponent will participate in scheduled meetings at the City of Waverne as required. So we, based on the criteria, we had a rating system, so the service understanding methodology was fifteen percent, and the relevant service experience twenty-five, and the fees is sixty percent. So below is the quoted fees received, not including tax. Some had a monthly fee only, some had an onboarding fee, support fee, and onsite support fee as an additional amount. So based on the amounts provided, the quoted monthly fees ranged from two thousand per month to forty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five and seventeen cents, with an average being thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety and twenty-two cents. Fourteen of the twenty-six vendors showed an onboarding fee, ten of the twenty-six had an extra fee for support, and fifteen plus three unknown of the twenty-six had an extra fee for onsite services. An agreement resulting from this RFP would be for the terms of five years, commencing on January 1st and terminating on December 31st, 2028. Provisions for one or two-year renewal may be offered subject to approval by a City Council. So based on the tenders that we received, we are recommending that the 2024-2028 managed IT services be awarded to WBM Technologies Inc.
This is who we have already?
It is, yes.
And their rate, again, if you would be so kind, is pull it down in comparison?
Yes, so their rate was eleven thousand two hundred and forty-four and fifty-six cents.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the proposal from WBM Technologies from Saskatoon, Saskatchewan, for the management information technology services for the City of Waverne in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents per month for a term of January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2028 be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Thanks, Laura. This looks, I'm pleased to see this many responses. Must have done a really good job with the tender to get this much information out of them. Couple of questions. I noticed WBM says no onsite support fee. I assume they do come onsite for support still?
Yes, they do. That's just included in their monthly fee.
Right, right. Do we have like a mean time to repair or a metric on how well they're doing at that?
So they will come down if we need them to come. It's kind of on a request basis. Most of their work can be done remotely.
Okay. My only other question then is, do they provide us with any kind of a compliance or IT controls report, like SOC 2 or 3416 or something like that?
I'd have to ask them for that. I'm sure they could.
It might be worth just making sure they have it, even as long as you're asking for it, to make sure they're preparing it is the important.
And I'll follow up to that answer. We do receive a monthly report from them, not in regards to that, but in regards to usage. And they provide a lot of data on kind of outliers of what they're seeing through our system that way.
Yeah, it's nice to be able to track those trend lines.
Thanks, your worship. Thanks for your hard work. I agree with Council Jenkey. To see this many responses is fabulous. Two questions, and I think the mayor answered it. We've been with WBM, or Astle already, sorry, for quite some time, correct?
That's correct.
So at least five years or more?
Yeah.
And so really, no concerns with the service to this point?
No, they've been good, yeah.
And my second question, and probably to the city manager, maybe Laura, you would know, is this, the police department also uses WBM? Is that a separate contract, separate amount, or is that part of this?
They have separate contracts.
Separate contract.
Yeah, so this is just for the contract for the City Waverne. If it's something that the Waverne Police Service want to look into, they'd have to go directly by themselves for that review.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Laura. I'd be surprised at how many responses we had. I was also shocked at the variance of the wide-ranging amounts that were discussed in that, as far as how much per month. As was noted before, this was once done in-house, and I think just for information's sake, based on what we are paying on a monthly fee for this, there is no way that we could continue to do or look at doing it in-house again?
I think the biggest part is, like, they have a team that works with us, so they can have multiple people doing multiple jobs or requests if we have, like, more than one issue. Having one person in-house and then having to deal with somebody's vacation, that was, that would be the biggest downfall.
So it would be beyond one person in staff doing this sort of job, as opposed to putting together a team, which would obviously cost you significantly more than what WBM would be? Thank you.
As I said, I echo what everybody else has said, that basically, I'm quite surprised we had twenty-six, and also that WBM still surfaces as the top one. But I'm going to lead to your expertise in that you haven't had any issues with them, and we're going to go forward with your recommendation. Call the question, all in favor? Carrie Dean, answer. The next introduction by law, by law 2023, 3467 zoning bylaw amendment, first reading only, if you would, please.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So we have a report for myself regarding to a zoning bylaw amendment for application from a number company, 102165485 Saskatchewan Limited, which is requesting that the property located at 316 Fifth Avenue Southeast be rezoned from an R2, which is a residential semi-detached, to an R3 residential multi-housing. So if the council does want to move forward with the first reading tonight of bylaw 2023 3467, then a public notice will be sent out in accordance with our city's public notice policy and with the public hearing occurring on October 23rd at a regular council meeting. So in February of 2023, the Southeast Corner Storm School Division sold this parcel to the applicant. The site is the former location of the source school. The applicant plans to build a multi-level senior residential care complex on the property, which is a permitted use within the zone. So you can see within, what I've shown here is the mapping of the area, and also aerial view of the site, and that's when the school was still located at. The school is now demolished on that site. So through our official community plan of 20203411, the property is currently designated as residential on the land use map. There are several relevant policies in the residential development policies. So 3.1.1 locate residential development to be compatible with our uses. 3.1.6 optimize the use of existing municipal infrastructure when applying new residential developments. 3.1.7 identify existing and future residential needs of the community along with entire housing continuum. 3.1.8, new residential developments will, wherever possible, be contiguous with existing urban development. And 3.1.14, residential areas will be provided with ready access to park and open spaces and to the Tagway Parkway through linkages from one another where possible. The zoning amendment is for the property to be rezoned from one residential zone to another, so it is consistent with the residential land use designation and associated residential development policies. So under the zoning bylaw of 20203412, the applicant has requested that the land be rezoned to an R3, again, which is residential multi-housing. The R3 zone is intended to regulate the location of higher-density, multiple housing in new areas of the city and give a variety of options to encourage developers to provide mix and affordable housing. The following is the permitted uses, so this is a permitted use within this zone. So again, if this is provided first reading tonight, bylaw 20233467 will then be forwarded to the district planning commission for input. So I have two options in front of council tonight. Option one is council give first reading to bylaw 20233467, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone the aforementioned lands from R2 to R3, and direct administration to advertise bylaw 20233467 as per the public notice policy. Option two is council refuses to give first reading of the bylaw of 20233467 and direct administration to advise the applicant of their refusal, and then they have to provide the reasons back to the applicant. So the recommendation is to go forward with option one, that council gives first reading of bylaw 20233467 to amend the official community plan, or sorry, amend the zoning bylaw as mentioned above.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 20233467, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 20203412 for the purpose of rezoning the property at 316 Fifth Avenue Southeast, parcel number 108915127, block C, Plan 90R56781, from residential semi-detached to R3 residential multiple housing, be read a first time, and that staff be directed to advertise bylaw 20233467 as per the public notice policy.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion? Laura?
Thank you, your worship. Matthew, perhaps this is jumping again, but will the developer have to work with administration on potential extra water use, going from a school to a multi-dwelling residential housing for the extra water and sewer?
Yeah, so once we review the plans provided by them, we'll have to make that decision. We don't know that yet, based on what their capacity is for what they require for that building. But once they provide our site plans and what they plan to do, and that, we'll have to have that review with them. So I can't answer that fully to you right now until we have all the information in front of us about what they want to do for that site, fully for that structure.
Thank you.
Matthew, apologies for asking a question I should know the answer to, and I think I do, but I'm going to ask anyway, so I don't get it wrong. This was an R2 zone when it was a school, was it not?
That's correct.
And do we remember why it was changed to R3?
Well, the request is for us to move it towards an R3, so they can move forward with what they want to do for development.
I'm sorry, was, it's always been R2?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes.
Not really a question, just a gratitude for the folks at City Hall for getting this to us as quickly as you did, and I look forward to seeing some stuff happening up there.
Call the question, all in favor? Carrie Dean, answer. First reading is accomplished. That will come back to us roughly when, Danette?
It'll come back, your worship, back to the October 23rd meeting, so we have to advertise this for two papers, so that'll be coming into the next paper coming up.
And again, that is just for people to know that, again, that is still deemed as one of the basic mediums, is the paper we're advertising this. New business, council leave of absence policy, if you would, please?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So as councils are aware, council was compelled to address this issue of a long-term leave of absence for a council member earlier in 2023. The issue was brought to light, has brought to light, the need for a policy for council members in determining a leave of absence for a fellow councillor. According to Section 120 of the Cities Act, a member of council is disqualified from council if the member is absent from all regular council meetings held during any period of three consecutive months unless the absence is authorized by a resolution of council or a leave of absence policy adopted by council. Council directed staff to draft a leave of absence policy for council members, so that if in the future this situation should ever come up again, then council would have a policy to follow and a process set. A policy has been drafted that addresses a leave of absence for council members, which includes criteria around granting approval. The policy allows for up to twenty-six weeks leave of absence with a medical certificate and cannot extend beyond the member's term of office. The council member must provide four weeks' written notice to the mayor and city clerk to include the start date of leave and the anticipated length of leave, along with a medical certificate. However, if the member is unable to provide four weeks' notice, they must provide the general nature of circumstances that prevented the notice. The council member would continue to receive their salary during any authorized leave of absence. The member would not be required to attend council meetings or committee meetings during their leave of absence period. Any boards and committees that council member, that the council member sits on, may temporarily be assigned to another council member at the discretion of the mayor. And so now the councils had time to review this policy. If council is in support of this, I would recommend that this policy be adopted tonight.
Mr. Jenkey?
Your worship, I move that City Council leave of absence policy for the City of Waverne be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Yes, the only thing that I would have to discuss about this would be, there's, and I think we talked to administration about this, Zoom attendance to council via Zoom is different than this?
Yeah, that is different, and that is allowed within our council procedures bylaw. There's a little bit of criteria around that, but you can attend by Zoom, but that would be obviously not for medical purposes. This is more for a leave of absence based on medical reason, whereas the Zoom, it just may be a one-off. That's more for a one-off situation.
I was going to say, is there, not that I don't want to see this move forward here tonight, but is there any way, would we tie it in, off, to use that other council procedure bylaw to tie it into this policy?
I, I don't know. I would have to review the council procedures.
Just simply because by attending via Zoom, would that trigger another new three months halfway through this one?
I don't believe so. I would have to check the council procedures bylaw. I honestly, I would have to check that. I can't answer that question tonight.
I was going to say, just by, because this gives us three months, could be a wait for three months, right?
You're allowed three months under the Cities Act.
Right.
That this would extend it beyond that for another twenty-six weeks with council's approval.
Right.
However, you would have to have a medical certificate to get this twenty-six weeks.
But I was just saying, by attending via Zoom, would that trigger the start of another?
I would have to check the council procedures bylaw to see if it includes regular attending.
I think, your worship, I think they're two separate issues altogether. I don't see the two of them connected at any point, and I think in order for us to do an electronic meeting, there has to be a motion at council to do that, right?
There has to be a motion of council for anybody to attend, so council would have to allow that council member to attend by Zoom or whatever means at that meeting.
Yeah, so I think.
So that would be up to the discretion of council.
Probably separate and distinct issues.
I was just wondering about that, because we, seeing, again, because we're moving into this electronic era, I just wanted to know how all that would be presented and such, but I'll leave it that we'll, if that comes about, we'll wait for procedures, council procedures. Okay. That being said, all in favor? Carrie Dean, answer. We now have Nicholas Pegra will be, give us a presentation, our city council with city administration and the lead, and Nicole being one of the lead people here. We have developed the City of Waverne's strategic plan, and she wishes to present what we have been working on to pull us forward, was kind of set the pace for where our next city council is coming up, because as we get into 2024, there'll be an election, and this kind of gives a good landscape view as to what direction we have seen and what we have seen in the past and here and what we projected. And again, they can, it gives them a new council direction to keep going forward, so they're just not floundering. Go ahead, Nicole.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, and thank you for that introduction. You're correct. So just to take you back, councillor Higgs, as a, just some information, background information for you, I know you were involved in a different capacity, but we started this process back in 2022. We started off with a senior leadership team, started off with a SWOT analysis, and we also did a SWOT analysis with council to determine, you know, obviously strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for the City of Waverne. And then we also developed a new mission and vision, as well as values, for internal employees of the City of Waverne. From there, we took this information, we had sessions with stakeholders. We did our first session in March of 2023 to present areas of focus to stakeholders within the community, took some feedback from them. to present um areas of focus to stakeholders within the community, took some feedback from them. Then we um sent out a survey to uh certain demographic uh stakeholders that were identified from council to as well get their feedback on the areas of focus that we had determined. And then we did the citizen survey, which I know you are all aware of, um to gather more input. So um the strategic objectives or areas of focus were shared and discussed with community stakeholders, revised accordingly and, and shared with community partners to provide their input. Information and themes gathered from the citizen survey was used to develop the final strategic plan, which you will see this evening. Um and like Mayor Roy said, the strategic plan will guide the actions and directions of the community over the next four years. Change aside. So first off is the vision. So uh a community for all is the vision that we have developed, and the mission is growing through opportunity. Our strategic plan will guide the actions and directions of the community over the next four years. The strategic priorities or areas of focus outline the foundation for all the work we do. They act as a decision-making lens as we work toward our vision and mission, providing the framework for decision-making, priority setting, and ongoing performance management. The strategic plan will hold city staff and city council accountable for fulfilling the collective vision of our community. So the strategic objectives or areas of focus have been actually renamed as strategic priorities. So in the citizen survey, we heard the desire for information that was more easily digested by a layperson. So by changing the, the term strategic objectives to strategic priorities, goals and actions, we feel this information and this process is actually easier to understand and follow for our citizens. So the first strategic goal that was developed is under the heading of economy. So three areas that we would like to focus on or three goals are to grow the economy, to ensure stable and diversified growth and business attraction and support. And that is something that was resounding from all the stakeholders that we engaged with internally and externally as well. The next group of strategic goals is under the area of growth. So in the citizen survey, one thing that we heard loud and clear was a need to have more focus on infrastructure planning and investment. So as a result, our original focus area of growth, which was supporting strategic growth, was amended to infrastructure planning and investment. And that is really the only major change that we had as a result of the, the surveys that we put out to um our stakeholders. The next goal is fiscal responsibility and stability and uh being informed and innovative is the third goal under growth. From there, the next set of goals is under our community. And so um three, three areas of focus or three goals that we want to have is to provide, to continue to provide quality programs and services, to have a diverse, inclusive and caring community, and to have a safe and livable community for our citizens. And then finally, the last area um is under governance. And the goals here are to have a culture of municipal excellence, to have organizational health and to have engaging and collaborative relationships. So that is our strategic plan in a nutshell. From here, what will happen, and we've kind of been doing this organically in the past, is every year administration um with the support or approval with council um will be developed to ensure we are meeting our goals identified under each of these strategic priority areas and in alignment with our strategic plan. And we will use these actions to measure project, progress towards our goals, which will be reported to council on a quarterly basis, which has been done for this last year. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is where again, we've got to uh this last part here is that we'll be reviewing this each year, measuring, we've got measurables, see where we're progressing. Council will meet and as this is council, we're moving into councils last year, this present council. This also will kind of trigger the whole process. That's how we're moving forward, we'll test it. So that when the new council comes in, they're not basically floundering for direction. We've already given the set direction. Some of us will, will be here, some of us may not be here and, but we've already kind of given a direction. Although the world changes, moves there, these are very general ideas, but this is what we're looking at generalized and not specifics. The specifics come differently because again, the world is, is, is moves and changes greatly each morning that we get up. So with that being said, that we have to have a motion for adoption of strategic plan, correct?
Thanks, your worship. I'd be happy to make a motion that the city of Waverne, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-seven strategic plan be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Other discussion? Jeff?
Thanks, your worship. Uh Nicole, thanks for all your work, but everybody that worked on this, thank you so much. I think these are, these are invaluable documents. I think they're great. Um and I know a lot of times it's easy to look at these and go, oh, that's cute and yada, yada, yada. But they always function as a bit of a north star for us, right? Or, or a compass under which we can sort of use to make a decision, A or B. Well, it's if it moves us closer, we're going with that. If it moves us away, we're, we're not. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I hope that everybody at home, uh all of, all of our, our residents, our friends and neighbors take time to look at this. And I hope that they really engage. Now, uh you know, certainly people will come and talk to us as councillors about it, and I think that's great. If somebody was to come in City Hall, they wanted some more information, um who would they talk to about it?
I can answer that. They can come and talk to myself.
Right on.
If they need to, they can talk to any of my senior directors as well.
Yeah.
Um we were all part of the, the process of developing um this document and, and these plans forward. Um and this is something that we will live as, as, as employees to make sure we fulfill back the residents. But if anyone has any questions, we are more than happy to answer those questions. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that and I appreciate the, the, the buy-in. I guess I'll use that word that I think the departments have. Nicole, did you get that feeling, that sense when you were working on this? And I know it wasn't just you, but right now you're the one standing at the podium, so you have to answer the questions. But did you get that sense very much uh from within our organization that this was a valuable document and something that they wanted and something they'll utilize?
I think so. I'm going back to um providing that north star, that guidance, right? It's the decision-making lens that we can use to make all of our decisions going forward. And so it provides staff direction as well. And then it trickles down back into those values that we established as well. So it, it's all encompassing. And so we've had some really good feedback from staff, uh knowing what their direction looks like in the future.
That's great. And if just one more, if I could, your worship, I, I know that at the youth council, we've had some conversations about a lot of these pillars. Um so I think that as that, as that group continues to evolve and grow, I think their engagement in this will, will, will multiply as well. So I think it's good. We've, we are a community for all, right?
Yep. And that was a stakeholder group that we did want to get some feedback from. Um unfortunately, we weren't able to get it because it was in June of last year. So the timing didn't um kind of connect with that. But we would like to sit down and have, you know, some sessions with that group to find out, okay, you know, what would keep you in waiver and what, you know, these are our areas of focus, but like what can we do as city staff and, and yourselves as council to ensure that that happens? What are those like smaller things that we can implement on a yearly basis to ensure that, you know, our, our community is growing and supporting?
And I'll speak for Paige. Her and I were at an event earlier this year where we asked that question of some young people, and boy, did we get some answers. So just, yeah, that's always good to engage. Thanks, your worship.
We were uh at the last monthly meeting that we have between the city waiver and the RM. There was a staff that was brought forward from, based on Stats Canada, I guess, was the one that they said that they looked at Waverne's, the projected growth from Stats Canada for the next ten to fifteen years is moving from eleven-five to about um thirteen-six-sixty was, was what they're looking for. A growth of about roughly twenty-one hundred more people over the next ten years, which we, people will say that may be small growth, but you need, or I mean, slow growth, but a terrific fast growth, it also comes with a tremendous amount of problems. So it's better to have a slow steady. Going forward, this plan again, thank you Nicole for this, for doing this, because it uh points us in the right direction of what we have to do and gives uh everyone. And the one point was that you said on here that this is every, the decisions guided are supposed to be put through the lens of this. So this is what the filter is, the, the lens that we look at. Are we following what we are, while we sat down? We're not veering off to the side with something that's not really holding to these values that we've set here at this point in time. John, any comment? No? Yes?
Actually.
You seem deep in thought. That's my absolute.
No, but I love the document. I, I think you're exactly right. It's the, it's our guide for the next four years. What I, I really like to see is to have our vision and mission here within council, like on the wall as a reminder of, to us every time we're in this chamber of what that lens is. And so when we're making a decision, we can look and say, that's what it is. And is it the right direction or is it not? So. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, worship. Um thank you, uh Nicole, for all of this. And thank you in advance to all of the directors. As a city councillor, we're expected to know a little bit about a lot of things. And I'm gonna be using this as an education tool to know what's going on in each department so that if I do have questions, I can come to you and ask about the infrastructure or finance or something like that. So I really appreciate something to help me as a councillor learn in the future and stay up on what's going on in the city.
Right.
I agree completely. Um in my own experience, having a document like this as sort of a guide, when you feel like you need to have a hard decision and have something to make sure you're pointing in the right direction, as long as it aligns with what we're talking about here, you're probably on the right tracks. I'd encourage everyone to refer back to this as often as possible. To which effect, I completely agree with councillor Corrigan about having it here on the wall someplace. And if I'm being fully honest, the uh the picture on page nine there of the council chamber really could use some sprucing up, so.
Larry, although you were not really part of council's development, in, in your past uh job, you were a part of this development. Uh comments?
Yeah, I think it's, again, it's a great document, and I think um being part of one of the stakeholders, I genuinely uh think it was a good process. You guys did a good job. If, is there an opportunity for other groups that might look at this and go, jeez, I I did miss a chance to have a conversation. I, I know we can't reopen, but they can certainly feed us information, I would suspect. And as long as they understand the document, we should be able to help them, right?
And that's the thing. A strategic plan is kind of a living document because things change, right? And so absolutely, I think we would all be open to having those conversations and gathering that feedback. And one of the things that we've been talking about is engagement and engagement with our stakeholders and with our community. And so we would never say no to somebody who wants to have further conversation about this. The other thing that we didn't really touch on about this is metrics and reporting back to the citizens to say, okay, you know, our goal is uh one of our goals is economy. And so in there, uh one of the goals was, you know, growing the economy. And so, you know, we're developing these action plans to get that to be, but to be able to report back to our stakeholders and say, okay, for two thousand twenty-four to grow the economy, the plans are X, Y, and Z. These are like the things that we're going to do or for infrastructure planning and development under, you know, growth. Okay, these are the infrastructure, infrastructure um projects that we have on, on the, on the queue sort of thing. So reporting back to our citizens and saying, hey, this isn't just a piece of paper that sits on somebody's desk or in somebody's drawer somewhere. It's a, a living document that we actually use to make all of our decisions and, and plan for the future. So.
Yeah, that in fact was my next question. Um so when would we, when could we expect any? And I realize that's, that's a huge ask, but when could we start to expect some of those um, what's the plan gonna be?
So we actually had kind of did that organically this last year. Um and um staff were actually reporting on those metrics um quarterly to the city manager, and the city manager reports that to council. And so um that's the process that we've used in the past is kind of working that way. Um I know we've, I've had some conversations with Paige, and we do feel that, you know, if we could put that out as well to our community, that would also maybe be helpful as well, so they could understand that, yes, these are some of the things that we've done or that we're doing to ensure our goals are being met.
Community and stakeholders, right? That's key. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Just for kind of where this kind of fits in, or having conversation with um the developer of that, that uh the planner who asked for the zoning change, who is looking to move, to move forward with this monthly level there. One of his comments was that he, they looked at, they're fairly widespread throughout communities throughout Saskatchewan and, and Western Canada. And they looked at Waverne because they, they liked Waverne's aggressive, the, the aggressive attitude towards growth and economy. They, and safety and structure. And he said that we, we had choices between a few other communities in Saskatchewan. Choice Waverne because of the look that you've got here these days. So that is where we thank council, we thank administration for the look that we've come up with. That this is where, this may be one of those examples that gives a start of an example of going. We have got an shining example that already businesses are saying, there's activity here in Waverne. This is a place to come and do business, and we're very active. And that's what we want with the strategic plan, to push it out towards this company saying, we are here to do growth and we are here to be, we've got vibrance that's still in a, in our Saskatchewan. We're not just sitting there as a dormant little, this community. With that being said, do we, we call it a uh, call the question, all in favor? Kerry, your name is. Thank you again very much. Thank you, administration of all who contributed and going through. Appreciate it greatly. Quirer's announcements, anything to start with? Mr. Richards, hot on the button.
I am. Thanks, worship. Just want to remind uh folks, if you have young people in your family, or if you are in fact a young person, uh but one more week uh to apply for youth council, those applications can be submitted. You'll find it on the city website. Probably if you went on the city's Facebook page or Instagram or the other one, Twitter, you probably could find links there too. Uh you know, the youth council in our community makes a big difference. And if you don't think that it does, I'd love to talk to you about why you think that, because it does make a big difference in our community. So um if you, if you know somebody that might be interested, send them our way. Feel free to reach out to me directly or to Paige Tenbolt, our communications coordinator, either one of us or city manager. He loves to take questions. Uh he'll take questions on this too, but um it's an important piece of what we do. So don't let this opportunity slip by.
Uh I'll start off, any other questions? I'll start off and then I'm gonna do let Laura, uh council morsette, uh make a comment, but a few things, three things here. First off, congratulations to Waverne Eagles on their opening night. It was a rainy, a bit of a rainy night, but they won opening game and showed the development of our junior sports within our community. Always a football fan. And you see the junior from minor football all the way through playing what our, the city helped get going under a game under lights. It was very exciting to see that type of stuff. And that shows again, a city that we can do games under lights, we're moving forward. Second thing, I was at the opening of our CP rail. Uh there's signs that are close to the railway. They're on the ground and some people may wonder why they're on the ground, but look and listen. It's simply because they're again promoting the idea that if there, people are on their phone texting, maybe they'll see these signs and think about getting, you know, look up and watch and listen for the train, so they're not gonna get run over. And the last one on uh, we're gonna have truth and reconciliation day will be this Friday, uh correct? On there. And this is a, a part of the ninety-four calls to actions, when it was rolled out. While that, that may not have been totally made clear on what they were saying, but there's ninety-four calls to actions that were put for reconciliations. And one was to have a truth and reconciliation uh day. With this, the city of Waverne officially observes this one, and the, the falling facilities will be closed on Friday in recognition of truth and reconciliation day. City Hall will be closed, Public Works will be closed, Waverne Leisure Center will be closed. Credit Union Sparks Center will be closed, Waverne Arts Gallery will be closed. Garbage pickup schedule on Friday in Area Two moves to Monday, and Crescent Point Place and Tom Zandi Sports Arena are open for scheduled programming on that day. With that, uh council morsette has more to add about some other things.
Thank you, your worship. Um just wanted to promote recognizing this day is an important step in our journey to reconciliation. And it really does reflect the city of Waverne's vision to be a community for all. So we are encouraging everyone to participate in the Walk for Reconciliation that's gonna be held in Jubilee Park on September thirtieth at one o'clock. Culture Day is actually kicks off tomorrow, and there's a whole slew of events going on until October the fifteenth. on until October the fifteenth. Waverham.ca has all of them listed, all of where you can take part. It's a wonderful couple of weeks to help educate yourself. So again, October seventh, the Credit Union Sparks Centre, there's going to be a whole lineup of events going on that day. Again, check out waverham.ca for more details. And if I might, your worship, also on October seventh, if you're hanging around for Thanksgiving, the Waverham Agricultural Society is holding their sixth annual Flavors of Fall. Tickets are on sale at Pharmisave, or you can get tickets at the door as well.
Flavors of Fall, yes. And a good, always a good event that corresponds. Again, Waverham is a very vibrant centre, and we have a lot going on, so please participate in all of it. Lots of sports going on, Waverham Red Rings opening this weekend too, on, with the opening against our Astvan, so that is always very good too. With that being said, any further comments? Seeing none, there are no notice of motion here tonight, and so with that, I shall call this meeting to be adjourned. Thank you.